Appreciate folks being with us today. If you haven't already, I hope you get a chance this week to enjoy the Fairfield County Fair. A number of county folks and elected officials and others were there to enjoy the official opening of the fair yesterday morning in a white boys went out to the rodeo last night, seemed to have a really good time enjoying that. So I know a number of us have plans to do different events throughout the course of the week to enjoy and celebrate the fair. And I hope folks get a chance to do that this week as well, including this Friday, which is Fair Day, right?
Yes, it is.
So folks getting, I think folks some years ago, we traded Columbus Day for a Fair Day. And so folks will get to enjoy that this coming Friday. On our agenda today, we're going to have an overview of the health benefits and some changes that we need to make. Unfortunately, this year, our expenses associated with health insurance have increased more than we hoped. And so that's causing some some consternation. I hope as costs rise a little bit in terms of what we all have to pay for health insurance and benefits are modestly trimmed here and there to account for those rising costs. Folks might just take a moment and appreciate the long run of years we've had with incredibly modest increases and fantastic benefits. And I know that's kind of hard to think about when you experience a change. But I am very thankful for the program that we have and the modest cost that has provided us over the past many years, even if that changes a little bit in the current environment. So just quarter, that's you ready?
Yep.
All right.
All right. Good morning, everybody. We're going to do an overview of our 2024 health insurance benefit renewal. With me today, we have Kate Pooben and Sue Justovic, both of our consultants with NFP came down. They've been instrumental in helping us put together our renewal in the face of some real headwinds that we've been experiencing due to claims. To put it into perspective, this is one of the largest claims years 2023 that we have had in recent memory. And there are a couple of factors that figure into that, actually claims experienced with individual claims, cost increases from our medical providers, inflation is playing a part of that. When raises are given to healthcare providers, that's passed along in process. And also, one of the other big factors that we're experiencing is the increase in pharmacy costs. So we have a group of folks here who are strong adherents to taking their medication. That's great, because in the long run, taking your your blood pressure medication, your other medications helps us in the long run to push down claims costs for medical care. However, when new drugs come to market, when we experience people moving to new drugs, that increases our pharmacy costs. So we'll get right into it so that everybody can take a look at what's going on. So in 2021, in the height of the pandemic, as you will see, our medical claims cost went down about 21%. However, our pharmacy costs during that year also went up 20.5%. In moves 2022, coming out of the pandemic, our medical claims costs shoot up 26.5%. Now, when you offset that with the decrease in 2021, we were looking about a 4% increase overall for those two years of medical claims, which is pretty normal for what we do. But once again, our pharmacy costs went up 20.5% for that year. So we were able to hold steady with no increases for those two years. What we're looking at for 2023 is something different. The figures you see are through the August time timeframe. We're not to the end of the year yet, but we wanted to give those to be illustrative to everybody to see that as of this year right now, which should be a normal year for us, our medical claims are up 9.5%. Trending towards the end of the year, we're going to be looking at probably close to 20% based upon some of the claims experience that's going on right now.
That's the question.
Sure.
So with pandemic hit and procedures were delayed or deferred or not occurring, I think some of us kind of expected a COVID bubble to kind of work its way through the system, correct? Does that bubble through the system now, or do you think we're still experiencing?
I think we're still experiencing some of it. I think the rush to do some of the the minor things that people had put off were passed. But what we're experiencing now are claims that are, some of it's coming from deferred care. People were not going, they're ignoring symptoms, and then the condition that they're experiencing is getting worse, and we're dealing with those issues. So I think you're through some of the minor stuff associated with COVID, the rush to get back in to have routine procedures. We're now dealing with some of the fallout, quitting off treatment that is associated with conditions like cancer and other things that are out there. So that's what you're seeing. Pharmacy costs, 13.3%, we're trending towards the end of the year, right up to that 20%. So that's what we're facing. The other thing that we're facing is a lot of our medical procedures are done in one facility. Folks are getting things done at FMC. Costs are increasing associated with that treatment. And we have to take in factor into account that, you know, we we have that limited market. So we've got to keep our eye on the ball related to cost increases. There is one bright spot that I want to point out before we get into some of the plan design changes. We we switched to a stop loss model this year where we took on the liability of our stop loss layer between $250,000 and $500,000. And while we may be thinking, oh, wait, this is a bad year for claims. Why did we do that? Why we did that is that we we actually saved $274,000 right off the top of what we would have normally paid to our stop loss carrier for that $250,000 to $500,000 layer. So that was our cost savings of what we would have paid in premium.
Can I ask a quick question about that?
Sure.
So I remember when we were going through that conversation, we talked about kind of easing our way into it. And I don't recall where we landed on that. Did we ease our way into it, or did we jump into it?
We jumped in at 500. So the other thing that I would I would point out, that $455,000 that we paid to ourselves in our stop loss pool, if you would remember, we put $2 million of our reserve funding into the stop loss pool. That $2 million is still there. Over the course of the year, we've been paying ourselves that premium amount of $455,000 into that pool. We have not used that amount of money at that $455,000. It's projected that we likely will not use all of that money. So at the end of the year, we will preserve the $2 million, additionally added some money into that for our stop loss coverage. And we are controlling what our renewal of that coverage will be based upon actuarial estimates and not being subject to the open market for that particular product. So ultimately, this has turned out to be helpful, especially in this year where we've experienced such high claims. So wanted to provide that information. It's one of the bright spots that we've we've experienced this year. It was very helpful to have NFP help us set that up. We applaud their help in doing that. Christina, our actuary is not here. We typically never see her on camera. She's the woman behind the curtain, but we do appreciate Christina's work. Here's the bad news. This year, we had eight claimants with catastrophic claims, $1.7 million right now. As of this morning, we're at nine claimants in $0.9 million. So this is what we've experienced this year in relation to catastrophic claims. Now, these are our, these are our spouses, these are our employees, these are our coworkers. These things happen. Typically, they don't happen at a level where there are nine folks all in one year. And that's why I'm saying this is probably some of what Commissioner Davis was referring to with a little bit of the COVID bubble. We've had people defer care. So that's what we're experiencing right now. That's what's driving our claims. Used to be, we would pay about $200,000 to $300,000 per week in claims. We're running around $450,000 right now. Do you have any questions as we move?
So, yes, but we have a whole day.
All right. Okay. So just to be clear, too, the last time we did any plan design changes or increases was 2020. So we've done about three years of keeping things steady, no plan design changes, no, no increases in costs to employees. But this year, we're going to have to do some, some changes. We're trying to keep them. We did a lot of research before we made these changes. We did a lot of research in government and public entities to see where they were with their plans. We also looked at the market, and we've come up what we believe is a balanced plan, which takes into account the in design changes and cost increases. Once again, to keep things moving in the right direction. So we'll, we'll get right into it. So as you can see, the plan design changes for 2024 are outlined in green versus what was the previous 2023 plan design. If you note, deductible will be going up from 300 to 500 for single coverage, 800 to 1,000 for, excuse me, 600 to 1,000 for family coverage within network. Co-insurance is at 80%. That is what the market is. We were previously at 85. Co-insurance is the amount that you pay associated with your treatment between the deductible and up to the maximum out of pocket. Our maximum out of pocket is being adjusted to 4,000, 8,000. That is in line with market. And a lot of the entities around us already are there for highest. We left the co-pays for office visits, virtual visits, specialists, and preventative care and urgent care, all the same. We want people to go to the doctor, get the care you need. Don't make it cost prohibitive. That's what we're, some of the things we're experiencing now is because people couldn't go to the doctor during the pandemic, couldn't get treated. But we, we want people to still continue that. One thing that we wanted to discourage is emergency room use. It's the least efficient area for care. And if somebody actually has to go to the emergency room because they end up being admitted to the hospital, that deductible is refunded. So ultimately, we have a whole host of areas where people can go for care, whether it be virtual, whether it be urgent care, whether it be the clinic. There are a lot of places that people can get care without costs. So we want to encourage them to, to do that. And you can see that that 20% there is a result on the inpatient, now patient, just adjusting the co-insurance to 80%. That's where that, those two figures come in. What you will notice in pharmacy is that we have to move the higher cost share for folks. The $4 copay for generic goes to $10. And you see the tiering that goes with that up to tier four specialty. If we put pharmacy into perspective, and I know a lot of folks out there have heard of the drug Ozempic. Ozempic is the new drug that people are seeking to use for weight loss. We do not cover it for weight loss. It is a type two diabetic treatment. Ozempic was not really used within our list of pharmacy drugs even a year ago. It is now number one amongst our type two diabetic drugs. So we have to take into account that a year's worth of treatment for that drug is approximately $19,000 is what the plan needs for cost. Maybe someday that drug's cost will come down, but as new drugs keep coming to market, doctors are incented through pharmacy sales to prescribe new drugs, even though there are some older drugs out there that might be just as effective and cost less. So we've had, we're having to tighten up our tiering on our co-pays. We're also going to have to tighten up our prescription drug list. As part of that process, we've run a disruption report. Nobody's going to experience a drug that's not covered. They may experience a drug that is in a higher tier or a higher cost share. That's it. So we've tried to take a measured approach with this. This is, this is a way that we're, we're turning up the plan to make it more in line with what other public entities are offering, but still keep it a very rich plan. A couple of other things to note with this year's plan, we still have the clinic available for all of our employees. We're going to be moving to a new location in November. That'll be communicated out to everybody. That's part of FMC's rebuilding some of the areas over in the strip mall associated with Kroger. So that'll be a really nice new facility for our folks. There's going to be an electronic check in for our people to come in and get moved to a room more quickly than others. So we're looking forward to that. We are going to be moving to a new EAP provider called Purelink. That's an exciting prospect because when anybody makes contact with Purelink, they're dealing with a licensed counselor from the first call that they're on. And that licensed counselor will be able to take our employees' information about what they're experiencing as far as a problem and get them to a counselor and make the first appointment for them. It's a higher level of service than we've had in the past. And we are also going to be reintroducing our onsite counselor as part of that process. We're going to be beginning that interview process with Purelink here within the next month. So those are, those are two good things about moving to the new provider. Now, we're going to move to the contributions and the employee change as far as contribution costs. For single coverage for the year, person will experience $73.58 cost increase over the course of a year. That works out to $2.83 increase per pay. Family coverage going up $6.74 a pay for a total of $175.24 per pay. So, or per year, excuse me. Sorry about that. Don't want to scare anybody. Would scare me. Anyway, those are, those are, those are cost increase that were necessary to put us in the right spot. Plan design changes in combination with this increase puts us at a point where we believe actuarially we're going to be sound. We could have increased costs much more. Our original quote for a renewal was about 16% higher than what it is now. So it was substantial. And that was done, that was done at the end of July. If we would do have done it later in the year, I'm sure it would have been higher as we have been experiencing those, those catastrophic claims. So.
Jeff, you mentioned the balance of the stop loss fund. What's the balance in the primary fund?
The balance in the primary fund right now is about $5.1 million. Projected to be about $3.8 million by the end of the year. That $3.8 million figure at the end of the year accounts for our prepayment because we, you know, December, we shut down and don't make payments. So we typically put about $1 million into our Mpress account to pay claims for that time period in December to the beginning of the first of the year that we aren't paying any bills.
What is that, that's just 3.8 billion is the estimate for a year in? What is that in terms of being a percentage of the annual cost of provision?
That would be about 16 million right now. That's just putting us a bit over. We're looking, we like to keep about 10% of that or 20% of that for reserve. So about 3.2 would be what we would want. We're still well within what those figures should indicate.
I understand the range you just provided, the 10 to 20. Is there, is there an industry standard or kind of like on target that the actuarials are?
20% is certainly very conservative. I do imply 10 to 15. So you always maintain a 20%.
And the other question, I guess, is, you've all been around long enough for the pendulum to swing and swing back. If we're experiencing a year without significant anomalies, can you, can you see any point on that horizon where the pendulum might swing back?
Well, well, we have to, to consider. It may swing back some. We're not going to swing back all the way. And the reason I say that is this, we're trying to take into account. Over the past several years, there have been a lot of hospital consolidations and purchases. And in many areas of the state like us, they've had one local nonprofit hospital. Earlier this year, when we were having this renewal meeting, Kate and Sue brought in, as you guys refer to him, the tan man, the big guy from NFP, Jim. And Jim was very blunt with me about what circumstance we're experiencing here. He indicated to me that they've had several counties in the state where their local hospital has been either purchased or, or consolidated into another hospital. And he said, if you are not prepared, what you would experience when that happens is a 20 to 30% increase in your claims costs. It's just what's, what occurs because there's consolidation, there's a transition. So what we're trying to do is to not get caught with a circumstance that that occurred, not that it is going to occur. We're just trying to be prudent in the fact that we should be closer to market. Our plan is extremely rich now. We are probably the only plan in NFP's book of business that had a copay of $4 for drugs. But we're trying to, trying to be still a rich plan and provide the benefits that our team needs, but be prudent and responsible in doing that. If that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. And again, I know working in the past isn't necessarily terribly helpful in this situation, but when the health insurance fund was robust and full of cash, we did have holidays efforts to, to return some of that money to folks. You know, certainly not the situation we're in now, but I hope folks will have some confidence that when we can, we do. And, and it's unfortunate that we're not, not able to continue that program. I think when we initially started doing that, we thought that might last longer. But for the unusual experience we've had this year.
You still are very generous in what it's offered to employees. We do have, do have the HRA program that's out there, the health reimbursement account. We have not set an amount for next year that people can earn. But people have been participating in the wellness program in Virgin Pulse, earning up to $250 to offset some of their costs. Obviously, we still have that out there. We can set an amount with that. Not everybody gets the 250 because they may not participate fully, but ultimately, there is a way that people can help offset costs.
Thank you. I'll see if my colleagues, first Commissioner, fix seven, just no questions or comments.
Yeah, I just, nobody likes to see increases, right? But I think, given what you've outlined today, the increases that we're going to experience in 2024 are reasonable. And I commend you and our insurance team for keeping it at, you know, kind of tamped out, right? Increases aren't fun, but these are really, we have a great program. And it's still really reasonably priced. And so I thank you for your efforts.
So, you know, Jeff, over the years, you've done a terrific job in controlling costs. And thank you. Our healthcare here in Fairfield County, one of the best everywhere. And I commend you on that work. And I also understand, understand what's going on. There's a lot of pressure for increased wages and so on and so forth. And healthcare is not instrumented that. And so this is, this is a reflection of what's going on in our economy. And, but again, thank you for your good work. This, this still is a very good program. We need to be thankful for that, even with increases working. But.
So I'm curious for you, how's it going, maybe, when you're able to demonstrate some level of largess and holidays, benefits and all that? I'm sure you get lots of nice compliments, kind words. Are you getting anything on the other side of it?
Uh, no, we're not. Actually, I think that, that we've had some feedback. Obviously, the changes that we undertook with the policy manual last week, associated with merit increases and vacation conversion was well received. And ultimately, we're going to be communicating this out tomorrow. So ask me after tomorrow what there will be. But I think people understand. I mean, you know, we're, we're dealing with a circumstance in which, as I said, it's our, it's our colleagues, our friends who've been experiencing some health issues, and we're going to get through it. We were in a good spot and we will continue to be there. We've just got to, got to work through those.
Do any of our union contracts insulate employees from any of these changes that you're proposing?
Uh, not that I'm aware of any. We've got everybody on the, on the contract provision to accept what's offered.
And then I want to welcome our folks here that are from NFP. During this discussion and presentation, were there comments or questions or times where you thought, oh, I would like to plug this in and add this to that conversation? And just wanted to give you an opportunity for any of those kinds of thoughts, if you may have them.
The only thing that I would say is that if you remember, last year, we did do a market check on the actual unit cost of care. And we looked at, you know, Anthem and Medical Mutual and all the other carriers. And you're still in the lowest unit cost for your care or particular health, which is going to obviously impact these claims. But usually, the claims are about half what we have this year. I would say maybe four catastrophic claims. But yeah, there will be better years, fortunately. Sue, do you have any to add?
I also like that. I know we're G D U providers. And I think the biggest news I thought was the best was that they were actually going to be able to support. I thought that was absolutely huge win.
Thank you for bringing that up. So yeah, our new onsite counselor will be able to see dependents under the age of 18, which was something that we could not offer before. You know, it's important for our.
That's, that's huge, especially when you're still good. I don't want to call it an explosion, but somewhat short of an explosion, but mental health and youth is significant.
I think it's very important for each of us. Yeah, Jeff has been working diligently to get that done. And we're also working to make sure that counselor is onsite as needed.
One other question I just.
Oh, please, continue.
So, and I don't know how to say this the right way. So I'll just kind of say it. I, and I don't know the answer. I don't know the statistics behind the average age of our, the folks we cover, right? And so question in my mind is, if we're, I mean, obviously, we're all continuing to get older, but if the average age continues to increase, does that mean, or is there a chance that that would turn into more large claims going forward?
It's possible. What was our average? Was it like 41 or something like that right? 42, 43. We went up slightly. And we keep an eye on, we monitor that. It can, not necessarily. I mean, we've, we've had catastrophic claims that are not associated with individuals who would be considered. It can, not necessarily. I mean, we, we've had catastrophic claims that are not associated with individuals who would be considered of a, of a more mature age, I'm putting it that way. Um, ultimately, ultimately, it can hit anywhere, anytime. Uh, but we do keep an eye on what the average age is because it can skew what we're looking at for certain coverages. So.
Thank you. Yeah, uh, County Administrator Cordell, please.
I just want to thank Jeff and the rest of the team internally and NFP. Um, they put a lot of effort in trying to get these numbers much earlier in the year to help us um prepare for the budget process. And I know that was some extra effort on your guys' part. And uh, and we are a member down of the HR team right now. So um, Abby's doing a great job and will take us through this open enrollment season. Um, but they're, they're doing a wonderful job. And I just want to thank you all for what um you're able to bring to the table for this presentation.
Thanks a lot. One more thing, um, tomorrow is the benefits fair. Um, and we'll be down at the Record Center. Want everybody to go down if you have an opportunity. There's going to be the passport, almost like a card, bingo card. You can get marked if you see every vendor and get entered into a, a drawing, um, which will be uh versa it, is that what it is? And then you guys are bringing the backpack full of goodies. Then it's also
Yes.
And there's a lot of free swag, so you can, you can be your best. So, all right. Thanks a lot, everybody.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. And thank you all for being with us. Um, I understand you probably have business to attend to and other things you need to do. So if you need to excuse yourselves, I promise you won't miss a thing. On these issues, we're a little off schedule a little bit. Jim, how are you doing today?
Doing well, thank you.
Good. The reason I just wanted to touch base with you briefly is I did have a, a meeting this morning with Bart, who was looking at some actuals on investment revenue third quarter that I think was strong uh by historical standards. And I just wanted to get your uh current view on, on investment revenue. And I know I'm putting you on the spot a little bit, but that's what we do here.
Well, I was sitting here doing numbers as we were talking. I suspected. Um, I'll check with Fifth Third because I, I've got from the Star Ohio side, I can calculate that very easily. Their side is want to check base with them, see where they stand. It should should trend, should trend fine, should be okay.
Yeah. So in, in, I think our last time that we substantively looked at that number, you did and reported to us. I think you were looking um on the, the top line, the rosy number, if you will. Uh, five point eight million for two thousand twenty-three. I think for purposes of estimating, uh, we uh skinny that down and, and we're currently using five. But I, I saw some numbers this morning that made me think we might sail past six.
I believe we'll sail past six.
The other thing I just wanted to make sure people understand is that in my opinion, which again, I'll defer to Fifth Third because they are way smarter about this stuff than I am. But I don't think we've fully cycled up in terms of our, our, our rate situation yet. And what I mean by that is I think we still have things coming off at lower rate structures and then things coming on at a, at a higher rate structure because that's the interest rate environment that we're in right now. Uh, so, you know, for folks that are worried about the economy or, you know, different revenue streams or what, this particular one has not fully cycled up yet. Would you agree with that?
Yes, because right now, items that have been within the last month, we'll say have been maturing. Uh, the rates on those instruments were under one percent. And the ones I'm purchasing currently are in four and a half to five and a half percent.
As I recall, when you, when we previously discussed this issue and you were, I'm gonna say top line five point eight, I'm just going from memory on that. If I'm wrong, it's unintentional. As I recall, your calculation of that number, you were not making assumptions about reinvestment rates. It's just if something fell off, it fell off, right? You weren't plugging a number in for the revenue on the reinvestment. Am I remembering that correctly?
Correct.
Yeah. Bart, did you have any additional questions on that front?
None on that front, no.
Okay. I appreciate you uh being such a good sport about getting put on the spot.
I talked to Bart very briefly this morning. He made comment about getting together, which we will do here within a week or so. And uh, so enjoy talking about it. Thank you.
Well, when Bart showed up this morning, he said, I have numbers for you. I said, oh, how much I love numbers. It's all, it's all good. I actually did. So, all right. I, I'm sorry to have gone off schedule a little bit there, but that was on my mind.
I thought you were just stalling so that we could have our special guest come and make public comment.
Hey, stop it. At this time, the commission sets aside an opportunity for voters and taxpayers to address the commission. If you would like to do so, please begin by stating your name and residential address. We do have a three-minute guideline. Uh, it's a rule today. We have hearings all day long at specific times. And I'll also just mention, not that any of the people who need to hear this are here, but uh I am considering making changes uh to how we handle uh public comment. And those changes would be to try to avoid those situations where I kindly ask that someone uh complete their remarks and several minutes sometimes pass before they actually, their remarks. And that's just not how we're gonna operate. But I don't have a good, fair uh solution to that yet. That is something other than a deputy removal. What I can ask you to do, we can handle this.
We can put a trapdoor beneath the podium.
In any event, we appreciate folks being with us. We do want folks to be at our meetings and to share with us. So under those terms and conditions, is there anyone who'd like to address the commission at this time?
Cherry Pymar, thirty-four, six-four South Bank Road, Millport, Walnut Township. I'm gonna get quick because I'm gonna give these to you. There was an article put out by, it's actually a post put out by a man by the name of George C. Franklin. He is a retired aerospace engineer. And he wrote an article, um, and I, I got it from online. And then there was another, uh, it's concerning solar and how green is not green. And it talks about how the heat from the solar, from big solar farms, solar fields can actually change the weather. And he explains this and that type of thing. So anyway, and then there was another post about how uh this guy was probably some kind of quack or something. Well, I did a little research on this guy. And he is a retired aerospace engineer with NASA. And his biographical information and everything is on the NASA website and the historical site for NASA. And um, I'm gonna hand this to you so you can read it in interest of time. But he's talking about how green is not green. And um, I'll just read the last sentence that he put in here. We are being pushed to save the planet with solutions that are worse than the problems.
Thank you. And on a broader note, thank you always for your courtesy. I'm the offender. I speak. Probably knew that.
No, I, I appreciate you guys so much. It's just, well, everybody in the county that I've ever worked with is on different things. It's just, this is the greatest county.
Thank you.
I'm previously in Franklin County and the, the, the people in larger governments aren't quite the same.
Well, you always enjoy the comparisons to Franklin County. We win those hand delays. Thank you. Thank you for being with us this morning. Under those terms and conditions, is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? Well, in spite of the fact that occasionally I do get frustrated and I'm sure that is apparent from my body language and intonation, please never, ever question the fact that we appreciate folks coming to our meetings and sharing with us. Thank you all for being with us today. And I already do legal. I didn't. All right, we're gonna just skip legal today then. Administration update.
All right. American Rescue Plan update from the thirty point six received. Twenty-eight point eight has been appropriated. Sixteen million expended and four point one encumbered or obligated. Um, we want to highlight um the new visitation center. Uh, they relocated to a renovated uh place at four oh seven um East Main? Yes, East Main. I was questioning the east or the west. And you're seeing this is gonna go by pretty quickly, uh, but a PowerPoint that our facilities supervisor um put together the before and after of the location. I know some folks weren't able to attend the open house. And I appreciate Tammy compiling this. Um, Mandy, who is the director of the Visitation Center, also shared um some great positive comments from folks that have been to the new location from both dads and moms. You know, wow, the new space is awesome. This room's so fancy. That was from one of the kids. Um, it's uh, this truck room was meant for us. It was a visiting dad, an inviting place. Um, I've been to a number of visitation centers across the state. This is the best one I've ever been to. And that was from an attorney uh visiting there. So bright and happy and incredible space for families. Um, I love the parking lot. Um, so you know, that some can take that for granted, but there is a nice parking space there in the rear for folks to get in and out of. And then one local attorney said it did remind them of the space they had previously been in several years ago at Columbus Street. So um, very happy with the turnout and just can't thank the facilities team enough for their hard work on this. Um, it was all them. Um, they did everything from beginning to end and appreciate the parks, the County Parks District uh for doing this lease with us and being able to use this uh former old home and turn it into a really great visitation space for uh those families.
If I may, Commissioner Fink. I know we all had a chance to, to tour the new facility last week. It's really cool. Uh, Judge Smith went out of her way to um thank our facilities team for all the incredible work that they did. So um, John, I just want to pass on, if you could pass on our thanks to them uh into, you know, noted publicly. Um, you know, sometimes we don't always see what you all do. Uh, this was a chance where we did get to see the, the changes that you all made. And uh, it's really incredible. Deeply, deeply appreciated by Judge Smith and my office.
Thank you, Commissioner. You know, folks may have heard me mentioned over the past number of years that um I am not in favor of the county operating out of old retrofitted houses. I just, I think we're, we've grown up and we're kind of beyond that now. This is a wonderful exception to the rule. Uh, it's a, it's a, a home-like environment for visitation. Uh, visitation being kind of one of those things you wish you didn't have to do. Uh, kind of like have a jail, you wish you didn't have to have one of those. But it is necessary. Uh, I share in the appreciation that others have expressed for what a wonderful uh job that was done in the renovation. I was in that building a number of times, a number of hours back in the day, two thousand eleven, as I recall. And I'm keenly aware of what it used to be and what it is now. It's such a fantastic realization of that. So thank you all for.
Yeah, and appreciate other departments' patience as John and his staff worked through that project. You're back on the to-do list, right?
We were catching up. And, and the, the staff, this was their favorite project. So I think that, that does go a lot into what the quality they do. Uh, you know, we love working in the courthouse and things like that, but I think they really, they liked this old house aspect of taking this thing.
They took great pride in it, you could tell.
So they, they probably have time now to fix my office, right?
Well, we actually subbed that out.
Sub someone else's to-do list.
Which will begin next Wednesday.
Actually, I'm kind of liking my new digs, so take your time.
And, and you know, that being said, if we had to sub that workout, it would be, be very costly if we could get a contractor to do it. But yeah, so I think the facilities folks saved the county a lot of money.
There's definitely a pinch in small contractors and doing that type of, of work. And we obviously save a tremendous amount of money, even though we have to sacrifice in that, getting a little backlog on the, uh, the other things, but we'll catch up.
There are certain things that are important, like his office and certain things that aren't.
Like his office?
Yes, like his office.
Okay, moving along. Uh, I'd like some resolutions, administrative approvals. The review packet does contain a list of those. And for today's voting meeting, there are eighteen resolutions. Just a couple of note I'll point out here. We discussed last week um increasing the administrative authority threshold to be commensurate with Ohio Revised Code nine point seventeen. Um, where increase the competitive bidding threshold. So thanks to Amy uh for work on the language in that particular resolution, but that would increase the administrative authority to seventy-five thousand. And then also have a key pace as those adjustments go forward in time. Uh, also a resolution authorizing me to sign a sub grant agreement with Fairfield Medical Center and its affiliates. So this is nearing the finish line for the Department of Medicaid grant uh for Fairfield Medical Center. So um appreciate their patience as we've worked through that process with Medicaid and Amy and Jeff as well. Thank you for your work on that. A little bit of back and forth, but as I said, we are nearing the finish line. Also have a resolution authorizing the approval of an engagement letter uh for the local government services division of the Auditorate State's Office to prepare um the two thousand twenty-three ACFR financial statements. A resolution to approve a partnership agreement between the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services and the Board of Commissioners for the operations and maintenance of a Marx Tower. A resolution to approve a service agreement between Mosley Elevator and the Commissioners for Elevator Services here at the Courthouse Hall of Justice, uh Government Services Center, Daco, uh Real Estate and GIS Building, Fairfield Center and Utilities Building. So thank you, John, for your work on getting that. I know it was um uh, a needed change there for our elevator maintenance and operations. Anything else you want to add on that?
No, I, I, they'll be making contact with those buildings as I come on board so that you can use the technician and who they are.
If I could ask, what's the update on the Marx Tower?
Uh, so that piece that's in the packet today is the approval for the state to essentially operate and maintain the tower that we own. And uh, the pad of architectural engineering is with the city of Lancaster now for approval. Once that's approved, they actually will begin construction. It's pouring a concrete pad, so that'll come quickly. The shelter, generator, everything else is all built and ready and just needs transport here when it's.
I know it's been.
It has, it has, and, and you know, we talked about the state processes that delayed this project.
Right.
Um, and I think.
So I haven't heard any more from the constituency of camp radio operators. And I was just curious if, if you think where that stood currently.
Yeah, we, uh, and, and in the meantime, we were, we were working towards a, a mutually beneficial arrangement where they're gonna move and relocate to the city's tower that is not as needed now because they've joined Marx. So now they get a better building, uh, the same height tower. Uh, and we're even gonna contribute and ask the state to contribute some work uh to help facilitate that. So they're actually very happy, which I hope one day they'll tell you they're happy.
Haven't yet, but I'm waiting.
Get there.
They will, but someone in Australia will hear it before we.
That's a, or on the moon, that's what I would say. Um, but yeah, they're, they're gonna be happy in the end. And the result of this is a, a better situation for them uh with the city.
And um, we did invoice the city for their contribution to this. And I do believe we received that. Is that correct, Stacy?
I'm not for sure one.
Okay. Uh, they divided uh that uh repayment between the fire and the police, uh, so we had to do separate invoicing for that. Uh, budget review, Mark.
Um, in addition to the strong investment earnings, uh, we also are doing well with our sales tax this year. Uh, October preliminary numbers came in, um, about two point four million versus a two point three million in two thousand twenty-three. That equates to about nine um months out of ten months where our sales taxes outpaced the previous year. Um, and we're looking at an eight hundred fifty thousand dollar increase cum to date so far this year compared to two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you very much, Rochelle. Can I under review?
If I may on the budget, I just, um, so went through the packet a couple of times this weekend, and I just wanted to thank Bart. Um, I feel more prepared for this budget than I ever have in my five years here. Every time I, I kind of wrote a question down, I turned the page and there was an answer that you'd already gotten. So, um, I, I just wanted to, to recognize the amount of effort that I know you put into getting the budget done and done in a way that is extremely usable and much appreciated. getting the budget done and done in a way that is extremely usable and much appreciated. So thank you, Bart, for all your, and Stacy.
Thank you. All right, Rochelle, calendar review invitations received, please.
All right, the National Association of Realtors is hosting an Affordable Workforce Housing Symposium on October tenth at two P M at the High Regency in Columbus. Our claim.
I interrupt. Sharp, and Anthony from Workforce Development is attending that this afternoon.
Thank you.
Our clay on Maine's renovation celebration is October eleventh from five to seven P M. There's a C C A O interview at the Fairfield County Fair on October twelfth. The Fairfield County Junior Fair Livestock Sale is October twelfth at five P M and October thirteenth at ten A M at the fairgrounds. The Salvation Army is hosting a trunk or treat on October twenty-ninth from four P M to six P M at the location of the Old Golden Corral on North Memorial. The Fairfield County Heritage Association is having their fall meeting on November second at six P M at the Chairs in Lakeside Chalet.
Count on me for that.
Absolutely. Thank you. The auditor's office is having a Making Numbers Count Financial in Service on November eighth from eight A M to twelve thirty P M at the Record Center. M C J D C sent a Save the Day invitation for their Holiday Happenings Open House on December seventh from ten thirty A M to twelve thirty P M. Under correspondence, we have a news release from the County Auditor's Office titled Fairfield County Auditor Announces Two Thousand and Twenty-three Ways and Measures Excellence Awards. A memo from Auditor Dr. Carrie Brown dated October fourth. The subjects are demographic information, resolution for a contract for the state auditor, and planning for vacation conversion for R E A. From the Office of the County Auditor, we have the wins of the week. An article in the Lancaster Eagle Gazette by Jeff Barron on October fifth titled Lutheran Social Services, Sixty Homeless Camps Throughout County. A flyer from Lutheran Social Services stating that they need to assist with homeless outreach, or their needs for assisting with homeless outreach.
And so at the end of last meeting, you know, there was a question about what, what they would might need or to be helpful. So Bennett worked on creating this flyer here that we shared with county employees just to solicit some of those items that they said would be helpful to take to the camps. So encourage folks to participate, bring in some socks or hat, coat, gloves, or even just some first aid items to be.
You're gonna bring them in here.
Yep, and we'll take them to town to get, get them out there. Sorry, Rochelle.
Oh, yeah, we've already received some socks, but I'm sure they could use a whole lot more. We've got letters from county residents regarding solar project, a newsletter titled M C J D C News Creating Inclusive Vision to Vision Experiences, and a newsletter from Visit Fairfield County, Ohio.
Under Old Business, I, I guess, as we kick off a series of hearings today regarding the two thousand and twenty-four budget, I thought I'd just kind of talk over you of that situation. It appears we will still be able to develop a two thousand and twenty-four budget where projected revenues will exceed projected expenses. There's more work to be done to get to that point. But as we look at kind of the, the stack to stack revenue and expense right now, it has looked worse in my time as a commissioner than it does today. Our cash position is certainly strong. But in that overview is certainly handle everything and anything within our ability to reasonably forecast. We target right about five years. We're, we're solid. But in the medium term to longer term, the expense trajectory, in my opinion, will overtake revenue trajectory. In my lingo, I refer to that as crossing the Rubicon. There's no going back once you, once you do that. And so what I'm advocating is that we make small changes now so that we don't have to make very large changes later. You see that train coming. You have years. And many, it's when you see that training coming, you can make very small changes now to accommodate that as opposed to deferring and delaying, waiting until it's actually here, then you have to really dive in on that. So I'm not being a Debbie Downer. I'm not being negative. Just trying to be as rational and accurate in terms of what we see. You know, I still think we're working through years and years, years, decades of mirrors games in, in treasures, things that, that are still out there. So there, there's certainly more work for us to do to, to have a a transparent and honest budgeting system. But we are, we are really close. And so I, I feel good about it. I just I, I do, I am concerned about that medium and longer term, even though things look pretty golden in the five-year outlook. Let's see if my colleagues have any questions right on that.
I wholeheartedly agree. Under all business. Can't even remember. When, when did I speak to Rotary, the morning Rotary this, before last meeting, that night?
Yeah, it was last.
Anyway, great, great visit with the, the morning Rotary. Did a, did a nice little few remarks to them and answered some questions. You know, one interesting question I asked them at the outset, I was pretty interested in their answers. I asked them how long they thought a solar panel lasted. And the answers were seven, ten, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, and fifty. And, and, and this is a, this was an educated group of people. Not necessarily educated on solar, but educated just generally speaking. And I thought having that range of seven years to fifty years was kind of indicative of what maybe just generally, you know, people think about those things. Perhaps without not individually having done much research on the issue. But in any event, really solid meeting. And then I, I have upcoming, I'll be visiting with Kiwanis. And then the noon Rotary later this month. Look forward to visiting with those folks and just kind of sharing what's going on with county government. So that's it for me. I'm Old Business Commissioner Lovesey under Old Business. So you know, we, we had an opportunity to attend the fair opening Monday, which I thought was great. I liked their new move to the Feeder Creek Arena as compared to the entrance. So I, I thought that was all good. Secondly, I had the opportunity to visit ceremony at two o'clock Monday, recognizing veterans here in Fairfield County. And it was real interesting. They actually swore in three new recruits at that meeting, which was great. But they also recognized a veteran of World War Two, the only one there that within a few weeks turns a hundred. And I was wondering why I actually had an opportunity to talk to him. It was just very encouraging. But also, they talked about Ohio Veterans Hall of Fame, which there's two Fairfield County inductees in November, and one being our mayor, David Schimpler, and the other being Heath Robinson from Fairfield County, who's deceased. He passed away at the age of thirty-nine. Probably directly related to what we've been referred to as burn pits in in some of the Mid Eastern countries, in particular Iraq and Afghanistan and others. And there, there was a bill passed that carries his name. The Heath Robinson Burn Pit Transparency Act, which was actually passed, which makes it much easier for veterans who are suffering from lung diseases and other things that are associated with these burn pits. So I, I thought that was great. But it's, there was twenty inductees from the state of Ohio. Fairfield County has two of them, okay? So it's, it was really good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fix under Old Business.
So I mentioned in our last meeting that we, with the land use plan, taking a step back, we're going to meet with each of the townships and villages individually. Last night, we had the opportunity to visit with Amanda Township and spent an hour with them and some of their constituents. At the end of the day, I thought it was a very positive meeting. Our team showed up in force, Rick Zabrack, Ani Cordell, Vince Papcidero, Jason Grubb, Holly Mate, Tony Vogel, Josh Andrews, Joey Abel, and Nikki Drake all were there. I think Holly and Joe in particular were very helpful in their township fiscal officer had some pretty deep misperceptions about how things work, and Joe and Holly were able to clarify so that she was not able to take her tangent and run with it. And so that was really helpful. At the end of the day, I think the map that we have in place for Amanda Township will work. They are interested in working cooperatively with the village of Amanda, who is interested in growing. So a good deal was accomplished last night. Of all the townships and villages, I think we've got twenty-four, twenty-five meetings to go. And half of them have been scheduled. So I, I have expressed to all of our teams that it's not the expectation that, you know, Rick or Ani or Tony attend every single one of them, but that someone from their team can attend and appreciate all of our employees who are taking time out of their evenings for the next probably two months to participate in these meetings. It's a big deal, and at the end of the day, we'll have a plan that everybody will have participated in. And I think we'll have some good planning to go forward. So thank you.
Commissioner, I'm moved. I mean, I, I knew you were setting about this task, kind of recalibrating the, the situation on the land use plan, but the work that you're putting into it is very much appreciated. Doing, I, I understand it's kind of your lane, if you will. If we have lanes as commissioners, that, that might be yours. But I hope that if you see a time and place and opportunity for either Commissioner Lovesey or myself to try to be helpful to you in that regard, I would want to do that. But in any event.
One more thing. First of all, thank you for that. Also, last week, after on Wednesday, had the opportunity to go to Amanda to sit with some folks who are facing the one guy that we sat on his porch, his home literally will be surrounded. You know, everybody says, oh, my, my home's gonna be surrounded. This guy literally will have his home surrounded with solar panels. And he had brought some of his neighbors, and, and we had a great conversation. And I mentioned to them how much I appreciate that type of interaction, right? That, that they're concerned and that they reached out and asked for a conversation, and we went and had one. Very gracious. And I think it, it helps me understand their perspective a little better by being able to go and look around and see what's around them now and what might be around them. And it, I think it also helps them understand more clearly where we are in the process and what the role of the commissioners is. So you know, it's more communication is better, right? So even last night at that meeting, we had some people who are anti-solar who are you know, basically, you know, pounding on the podium, just stop it. And we have to continue to try to educate people who don't understand the process that this is not the time or place for us to do anything solar until someone goes through the, 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 you know, registration process and through the power signing board, and then we get the opportunity to do something with it. So just continuing to communicate and offered again last night at that Amanda meeting, anybody who wants to, you know, have me or us come out and visit with them, happy to do that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Under New Business, when we, commissioners attended the fair opening yesterday, we were asked if we would participate in a, a, a video live stream, something interview at five o'clock on Thursday, just for the auction, the junior livestock auction. Commissioner Lovesey, I understood you were not going to be able to be physically at that event.
I have a cardboard cutout that I.
Well, if you could give me that and the money.
Okay.
I'll see the money.
I'll give you the money.
But anyway, Connie Smith asked if we would do that interview and on behalf of Commissioner Fix and myself. I said we would. She had also wanted to include you in that, but I mentioned to her that I didn't think you're scheduling.
Is there a way that we could get like one of those fat heads?
I already, I just turned around to Bennett and said that.
Yeah, I think at the auction, it would be really cool if we could take that fat head up, a day up with us after we win something, I hope.
I don't like any of the disparaging things you're saying.
It's not, no, it's.
You don't know what it is.
It's the term for the head on the stick.
I think it would be cool if you did that. So you're not gonna, you're not gonna offend me, okay?
Yeah, the other thing I wanted to mention under New Business is after a series of unfortunate events, the commercial solar system at one stop is operational. I have heard the number of folks who don't like it. Sadly, it's stupid. It's, you know, a lot of different things. But it's also operational. And I just wanted to mention too, the remarks I gave to the local Rotary this past week, they pertain to that solar project and that project alone, not to the wider discussion of other solar initiatives or concerns. So what we'll do now that that's operational is monitor data. What we want to see is the historical cost of electricity at that site, the production rates of the field as operational, and then the costs associated with, with powering that building under the, the new arrangement. And then we'll look at all of that data to be instructional for us as to where, if anywhere there may be additional opportunities to try to alim, alleviate what may be exponential growth in the cost of power for the county, in particularly for the general fund. That's what I have under New Business. Commissioner Fix under New Business.
I have none. Thank you.
Mr. Lovesey.
Just look forward to the remaining part of the fair. Although I can't attend Thursday night, I'll be there Friday committing on entrance as well.
Meal race is today, three o'clock.
Oh, goodness, we'll be in hearings.
I know.
It is all the land force.
Jeremiah, how are you doing today?
Good, Commissioner Davis. How are you?
Good. Well, I knew you got some kudos earlier for your willingness to kind of put your shoulder to the boulder and communicating as effectively as we can on the land use issues. Anything additional that you would like to share with the commission at this time?
Just a little note that my, my guys are, are stepping up and, and doing some good things. Pleasant Township had an emergency closure the other day. They asked us to kind of look at a a culvert that they had questions about. When we got into it, it was in pretty bad shape. So we went ahead and closed the road for them, and we're helping them out with the construction so we can get that thing opened up in about a week, not interrupt school or anybody else anywhere possible.
So I heard a story this week, and I wondered if you might have a comment on it, but I heard that you all had a rodeo out at the engineer's office. And I also heard that Ani Portal drove a rig and was the best driver ever on site. Did, did you see that happen?
I believe I did, yes.
You did, Jason, heard. You did, Jason, heard, being your great co-pilot.
So, uh, up note, um, just, I probably told Ani this, but don't, don't do what I did. I had a really good run going uh, like three years ago, you know, or it's probably been longer than that now. It's one station you have to turn around and back through. So I go to turn around and I turned around in our grassy infield area there behind the, you know, the storage area and whatnot and sunk the truck to the accident. Consequently, I had signs out there, no parking. These things would show up about rodeo time every year. I'd, I'd get emails and hear a lot of stuff too. So I'll never live that one down.
It was a good opportunity to fully appreciate what your folks are, are experiencing in, in the winter. I mean, it was just a hint of that and um, it's uh, it's tricky work.
It's a good way for us to, to add a little bit of fun and to getting them used to driving around with a plow on the front of the truck. Um, it's, it's big and you're up there a long ways and it's pretty intimidating if you don't do it. It really is.
So they don't let you drive the truck, is that right?
Uh, they won't let me go out in plow snow, but I'm likely to drive around as long as I don't park in the infield.
Okay.
They talked about a retirement job for me.
I can see it.
Uh, I think we have the medical ability to prevent that from ever happening. Jim, how are you doing?
I'm doing well.
Good. Appreciate you being with us. Anything you'd like to add?
Uh, no other comments other made earlier unless there are any questions?
No, we're, we're good. When, when, um, IC, is that, when, when's the next IC?
It's probably gonna be the last Tuesday this month. Reason is because you've got the hearings and the rest of the month. So we'll probably go October 31st.
That might be a good time to take stock and see what the situation looks like at that point.
Touch base with me on that, Jim, because he does have a meeting coming. I know he's not, I know he'd want to be in attendance.
Okay. Yeah, but uh, don't, don't, don't wait for me, folks. You know, bow ahead.
It wasn't intended.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just want to touch on the healthcare costs. Um, thank you so much to Jeff and the HR team and um, NFP. I have two fairly new um, folks in my office and these costs are still way below, way below what they were paying before they came to Fairfield County and the additional benefits that we offer to our employees. They appreciate those so immensely, the free clinic, the, the EAP, all of everything. So um, thank you very much to all of those folks. And then I just want to mention that coming up next week, I have a title searcher that is regularly in my office and he approached me to teach a course for some of the local realtors and title folks on how to actually do a title search in my office. So I, I'm allowing him to have that opportunity next Friday. So I will briefly meet with all of those folks and he will go about his two-hour course of teaching them um, the basics of how to do a title search in the office.
I think that would be so helpful to a number of people, including your staff. I, I recall uh, a few years ago, I was up there trying to find something and that wasn't the area of law that I was familiar with. And I couldn't find what I needed to find, but your staff was very helpful and, and uh, I suspect that in a given week, you all find yourself needing to be helpful a number of times. And if uh, people were, that, that do that kind of thing, uh, had an opportunity to be a little better at it, it's probably good for all.
Yes. So my staff will, we, we do the best that we can to assist, but technically we are not supposed to search for folks.
Oh, thank you.
So we, 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 we will do what we can, but there is an extent where we, where we reach out and tell them they need to reach out to these folks um, that have the area of expertise and the knowledge. Um, you know, especially when they, they're looking for some quite complicated information and are looking for some advice to go with that. So.
Good afternoon. Appreciate you being with us. Brandon, how are you doing?
Oh, thank you.
Good. You look sour, like something wrong. Tell us what's wrong, Brandon.
Nothing, nothing this week.
Good. Nothing, Dan?
Nope.
Well, in all seriousness, we appreciate you being here. So it's, I don't know, can't put my finger on it or whatever, but when elected officialdom, so to speak, joins us for our meetings, um, I think it, it adds content, makes us all feel a little better about what we do. So we appreciate it very much. Dr. Brown, how are you today?
Very, very well. Thank you.
Good.
One of the measures of growth in a county is new construction and this year it will top a hundred million, which is the largest new construction number ever. So wanted to report that because it's a measure of health and growth in a community. With the Ohio Geographically Reference Information Program, uh, that's a statewide effort to use GIS and other technology tools. We are developing a subsidized housing list for the entire state. It's something that the budget bill requires and um, we're many steps ahead based upon that work group. We actually do have the Fairfield County list already available and we're using that with our computer assisted mass appraisal tools as well. So we're a little bit farther ahead than we normally would be for our 2025 reappraisal. The Association held a panel discussion about the opioid uses of those funds that have already been received. And the conclusion of that panel, which I participated on, was to use the invoice method as accounting. Um, if one is going to reimburse local dollars for um, peer programs or other types of local dollars that have been spent. So I just share that now as a possibility that might be for our own use of those funds too. Um, particularly if we're going to reimburse for general fund or levy dollars that haven't been matched. It's something that has a bit of an advantage to the local community and um, the invoice method is preferred in that particular situation because it crosses periods. Destination downtown were adopted a strategic plan last night, which includes um, strategic activities for the Shoemaker, other economic vitality, and things relating to stakeholder engagement as well as capacity building. And if anybody would like a copy of that, it's gonna be on the website, but if you'd like some additional information about that, we have that. I know that there is the opening and for the Shoemaker, which is a name selected based upon what the activity was there at one time, even though it's spelled S H U instead of S H O E. During our senior leadership meeting, there were several comments about Jimmy Gordon and his positive um, effort. So I share that now for Dan to hear publicly and everybody else, that he's done such a great job and particularly the new staff are being led very well. And that came up unprompted like three or four times. I mentioned that today. We received a thank you note from Athens County because we helped them prepare their payroll. They use the same Tyler technologies that we do. They ran into some trouble and we helped them prepare payroll. And everybody knows that one thing you don't want to miss is payroll. And so they sent a very nice thank you note. We also received a note from the South Eastern Correctional Institute about our work with um, workforce and connections with Midwest Fabricating as well as with their fatherhood program. I'd say thank you for Fair Day because that also came up several times during an all-staff meeting and people were very happy to continue, continue to have that holiday.
Commissioner Lovesey has a question and I do as well.
So I, I saw a comparison of contiguous counties on what the property or rate increases were on an average basis. And I believe Fairfield County was the lowest number. Is that correct?
Well, I don't know because I haven't seen Licking's final number yet, but I think it was higher at the last check. And I know that Franklin's was higher. This was all based on our statistical analysis. The state provided to us thirty-two percent and we gave them an additional analysis of statistics to so twenty-seven and a half. So it's all about statistics.
Everything I saw was well above thirty percent.
We'll, we'll continue to evaluate and analyze things as we go to twenty-five.
So, going to give you a didactic opportunity, which I know you'll appreciate. Take a house that sells, like it's on the market, have showings and then the house sells in a arms-length transaction, just a traditional sale of a house and um, and the, the price is reported, uh, payments fees are paid and so forth. Does that sale transaction automatically become the new valuation? Of course, there's some process or salt and pepper that comes into the equation that might influence whether that transaction automatically becomes the new valuation?
There's nothing automatic about it. Um, it's based upon a statistical analysis those every three years. However, if there's something that happens to that particular house, like they've had, you know, building permit where they've done a major remodel, um, that is something we're supposed to track. So if there's something else other than the sale, it would happen at that point in time. But there isn't anything else other than the sale that would go within that three-year period, the statistics that would make that adjustment. We're not permitted to do what I think you're alluding to, which is called, we're not permitted to do that because it messes with the statistical analysis.
I think that we are familiar with that transaction getting used, particularly like from a board revision standpoint, is someone using that transaction to try to lower the valuation because for whatever reason, an arms-length transaction occurred and came in, in rare circumstances, but nonetheless, the low in orders of valuation.
It is a evidence of the market.
That's helpful. I appreciate that. I, I uh, misunderstood that. I don't know. Is there any other issue item that anybody would like to bring to the attention of the commission? I'll ask my colleagues if you would like to be up or down.
Up there.
Please rise if you're able. Even want to. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, infinite in law, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Michelle, do we have any announcements?
As mentioned a couple of times earlier, this Friday, October thirteenth is Fair Day and the county offices will be closed.
Uh, I have a bond to the approval of minutes for October third.
I moved.
Second. Discussion.
Good catch.
Please call it a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Minutes pass three zero. From the Commissioner's Office, Resolution 2023 dash ten dot ten dot A, a resolution approving contracting and financial authority in commemoration of county administrators administrative approvals to section nine point one seven of the Ohio Advice Code.
Your commissioners move items A, B, C, D, and E.
Second. Discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Auditor Finance Department, Resolution 2023 dash ten dot ten dot F, a resolution authorizing the approval of an engagement letter for preparation of 2023 APFR financial statements provided by local government services of the auditor of state.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
This is our traditional contract with the auditor of state. They assist us in the preparation of multiple financial statements. It's one of the best deals that we actually have. We research the market for independent um, accounting firms and it's about seventy-five percent lower cost than those particular firms.
That's awesome. Thank you. Further discussion? Please call it a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Auditor Real Estate Division, Resolution 2023 dash ten dot ten dot G, resolution approving an account-to-account transfer into a major expenditure object category.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Forecasted this last week, proper payments and within proper object codes.
Discussion. Please call it a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Court of Courts Legal Division, Resolution 2023 dash ten dot ten dot H, a resolution approving an account-to-account transfer in a major object expense category.
So moved. Second. Discussion.
Please call it a roll.
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Court of Common Pleas, Resolution 2023 dash ten dot ten dot I, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category, Fairfield County Common Pleas Free Court, grant twenty-eight thirty-nine.
So moved. Second. Discussion.
Please call it a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, Resolution 2023 dash ten dot ten dot J, a resolution authorizing a memo expense memo received for the Fairfield County Thirty-three Development Alliance.
So moved. Second. Discussion.
Call it a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency, Resolution 2023 dash ten dot ten dot K, resolution to approve a partnership agreement between the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services and the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners for operation of a Marx Tower.
So moved. Second. Discussion.
Please call it a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Facilities, Resolution 23 three dash ten dot ten dot M, a resolution, um, a resolution approving a service agreement between mostly elevator and Fairfield County Commissioners for elevator service at multiple buildings.
So moved. Second. Discussion.
Please call it a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2023 dash ten dot ten dot M, a resolution to approve a memo expense memo received for the cost of birth certificates paid to Fairfield County Health Departments and the memo expenditure for Fund Number Twenty Seventy-Two Public Children's Services.
So moved. Second. Discussion. Where were you at one PM on Sunday? I'm teasing. You don't have to answer that. I know where I wanted to, but in any event, further discussion.
Call it a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, Resolution 2023 dash ten dot ten dot N, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category for juvenile court, twenty-four oh eight drug court program fund.
In the Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, I move items N, O, and P.
Second. Discussion.
Please call it a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Prosecutor, Resolution 2023 dash ten dot ten dot Q, a resolution accepting Victims of Crime Act and State Victims Assistance Act grants for October first, twenty twenty-three through September thirty of twenty twenty-four. Grants could be administered, administered by the county prosecutor.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Please call it a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Payment of bills, Resolution 2023 dash ten dot ten dot R, resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need board commissioner's approval.
So moved. Second. Discussion.
Please call it a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for October seventeenth at nine AM.
So over the course of the uh, remaining day, uh, the commissioners will have uh, budget hearings with the Board of Elections, Facilities, the Engineer's Office, Juvenile Probate Court, Sheriff's Office, Prosecutor's Office, Common Pleas Court, municipal judges. If we stay on the schedule, um, should wrap up uh, probably in the three-thirty range uh, for that series of hearings today. Um, so far today, nobody has suggested that I'm people or horrible or a worthless person. I want to give you one last chance. If anybody wants to, okay, I got it. Now I feel complete and I appreciate yours.
Is that enough to be just to address?
Is that enough to be just to address?
Any other issue item that you'd like to bring to the attention of me?
He wasn't really picking. I thought you were asking for just open.
Oh, I thought you were saying.
You're evil.
I thought that's what he said.
I mean, like, we could put it to a vote if you want.
Let's do it anonymously.
Providing a friendly reminder that Friday, we will be shutting power down to this building, which may impact, limited impact across the county, but definitely impacting this building itself. And IT and I will try to make sure that we maintain as many services and get them back out Friday.
Does that replace that panel?
That's replace any panel building.
Took some time we did, right?
About 50 weeks.
I'm not chiming in on your thing. We have two birthdays that we will celebrate this week, Tony's and Jeff's. You guys are both Friday, right? And Corey and Steve's. It's not Tony. Tony's in the spring. Yours is next week. You gotta wait a week.
And I will say that I look forward to 60 even less than I look forward to 40 and 50.
You're still hidden, so that's something to look forward to.
It's not, it's not, it's not yet, but it looks good for you.
So I got a shot.
Is there anything relevant that anybody would like to add?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second. I got a motion to adjourn and a second. Those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most sign. Motion carries. The commission will come back in session for another meeting at 11:00 AM.